Okay, we're ready.
We're ready.
You're ready? All right, we will begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin the meeting, I would like to ask you to hold a moment of silence to remember all of our servicemen and women who serve overseas and here, and those who have given the ultimate sacrifice. I always say that the same way twice, it would be a miracle. Public comment. I don't think we have any public comments this morning, would you?
Just welcome Tom Corina.
We have Tom Corina, the town manager from Born.
Glad you're here today.
We're happy that you've joined us this morning.
We're glad you were here.
Good.
Just wanted to come and say hi.
Good. Well, thanks.
We should mention that Tom has always been very loyal, because every time we'd met in Born, Tom Corina was shown up.
That's very true.
We'd really appreciate that.
Any issues you want to talk about that are facing the town of Born that...
We are actually in pretty good shape. We're fiscally fairly good. We are hiring a new HR director at some point. Transportation is an issue. The bridge construction right now is an issue, but it's been very well mitigated this time through. And our technical school is bursting at the seams, so we have to start thinking about something to do with that. We're actually doing pretty well.
Right, and we're going forward with your working on your... On the waste, on the solid waste?
We are, yes, right. We will be sending a letter to all of the towns on the Cape and a couple of towns on the South Shore for a meeting in November at the tech school to come at least in here what we can offer as an alternative come 2014, 2015, when your contracts expire with most of the towns.
So that should be pretty interesting.
It should be a very good meeting.
Tom, this would include the Born facility, but would it also include this company that it is that you've been talking with about building here in Born in terms of solid waste, or is that something entirely different?
There's a number of different tracks. This is primarily for the disposal of municipal solid waste and construction demolition here. We are working with a number of different entities right now on everything from different uses for the methane to different types of MIR from recycling centers, recycling and reuse, and different types of combustion. The key right now is showing the communities within the county what we have to offer and that we can in fact handle the solid waste right now for the next 10 to 15 years, but we're also looking at new alternatives that are more environmentally sound, more environmentally sound than landfilling and/or combustion. And we're working with a number of different companies to look at that. We have two really cool ideas going right now on the methane. One is from National Grid to clean it and extract it and put it right into the pipeline. That's one that they're working on. And the other is to take the CO2 that is combusted off of the flare, bottle that, and then take it over to the base as a pilot and feed plantain with it for biofuels. So those are the two gas-related things, but we're also working on a number of other MIR-type issues that could, I think, become a regional partnership as opposed to just the landfill. So I think the people who do show up in November will be very pleased with this meeting. We worked hard for a couple of years to get it to this point. Thank you.
Many years ago in Howard, they had the treatment, let's see, service treatment of waste material where they were processing that, and they were using the landfill at that time to be a spot for it. That was, in addition to, you know, MSW, that was one way of, let's see, of responding to the need of haulers who were basically cleaning up on-site septicage. And then the outcome of that was potable water. Of course, I don't know if I'd want to drink it, but it was water that was, that could be directly reintroduced into the aquifer. And, you know, and one other thing we'll be talking about at the Cape Light Contact Meeting later on today is the ability of presently capped landfills to have a larger area for solar, you know, let's see, solar devices.
Yeah, the photovoltaics on the landfills. And that's something we're looking at, but right now the cell that we have capped is we're not ready to move in that direction at the landfill, but we are certainly going to look toward land-based photovoltaics there as we cap them and put final grade and cover on areas. But we have several more cells that we can build, and we're looking at additional land south on 28 to enhance what we're currently doing. We have 25 acres of site-assigned land that we can utilize for any environmentally sound purpose. It doesn't have to be for landfilling, and we're looking to get away from the landfilling in the long term to utilize these 25 acres for more environmentally benign type disposal.
One other question with regard to alternate energy. I know that you've begun to look at, you know, putting up some wind turbines in town, and we're wondering whether or not, you know, you're going to use any of that for, just personally, you intend to use any of that for water treatment?
For wastewater treatment or water treatment?
Both, because the intimate nature of, you know, wind lends itself to, you know, that type of service.
Two things. One, the wind turbines that are being proposed right now are private, and there's possibly a partnership with one other on Born land over on the other side of the canal, on the north side. The wastewater issue for Born right now is we're not ready to discuss that. We are really looking at capacity and where we could put a facility if we needed to, or how we could perhaps tie in with a community on the other, on this side of the bridge, and we have to figure out how to get it across the bridge. That may be something that is more cost-effective for the Buzzards Bay area than perhaps putting $28 to $30 million into a facility. If we could do a direct drill under the canal, that type of thing, it's certainly something that we would look to tie into the base and then tie into something that may be going on in another community.
Well, I encourage you to, you know, keep in contact with our wastewater collaborative and see what we can do.
Yeah, we, our member there is very active.
Yes.
I know she's very active, and we get frequent reports from her, so.
Right.
Thank you.
I did want to mention one thing about alternative energy. We've done, through the Cape and Vineyard Electric Cooperative, we did a project on Born Middle School for almost 100 KW of solar PV that came online, I think, in July of this year.
And the Compact is also right now undertaking three projects for us. They are insulating and windowing, if you will, the Pocasset Fire Station. They are working on insulation windows. They're not going to happen at Station 1 in Buzzards Bay because there's some structural issues with that building, but they're putting a lot of time and effort into that. And they're also working with the library right now on quite a bit of energy efficiency work, so it's been, it's been a great, great piece for us.
Great.
The golden doorway to Cape Cod, Born.
Right. Next on our agenda, we have Mark, who's going to give us an update on this campus.
Thank you.
Which is why we're here.
We're on Pocasset, as you know, and this is the former site of the Barnstable County Hospital Facility, which we closed back in 95. And since that time, there's been quite a few changes here. It's been a while, I think, since any board of commissioners has come here. And I first want to thank Gosnell, who are in the Gosnell Thorn Clinics. I want to thank Ray Tomasi and Kevin Chase, who's not here today, but for letting us use the facility here. And I want to introduce Diane Spears. Diane is here from the Valley Thrift Shop, and that's the prime reason we're here. They took one of our former doctor's residences that had been vacant for a long, long, long time, more than 20 years, I think. And we're leasing it to them at a nominal cost, and they've renovated it and they've turned it into a thrift shop, so we're going to take a walk over there and take a look at that. But before we did this, I just wanted to kind of familiarize you guys with what we have here. You know, as you came in, you saw the assisted living facility, 100% affordable.
An area player's dream.
It is. It's been a tremendous facility. It's at, I think, 90% full right now, so that's good.
That's doing good.
I believe so, yeah. It's been good. So that's been a tremendous kind of addition to the community here and the Cape in general in terms of affordable assisted living. That's not something that you find in a lot of places. As you came in, you saw one of the former doctor's residences as well, right on the corner, and that's the Elder Services Offices. They've been in there quite a while. We have a long-term lease with Elder Services, so they take care of that building. And as you know, when we were doing the assisted living facility, we put a preservation restriction on most of the property here. It's about 90 acres, and I think about 70 of it is under the conservation restriction. And it's really like a horseshoe. It goes up the side of the assisted living, wraps around the back, and comes over all the way down to, I can't think of the name of the road down here.
Valley Farm.
Valley Farm Road, yeah. There are a couple of trails in there. I asked actually Darlene to take a look at how, what kind of shape the trails are in, but there's actually a walking trail that you can walk in the back.
Is AmeriCorps helping with the maintenance of that trail?
To some extent, and that's what I've asked Darlene to kind of look at, how much maintenance it needs, is there something they can do a little bit more, but there's a walking trail in the back, so.
What about the part where we started the Victory Garden?
And that's over associated with the Valley Thrift Shop as well. I don't know if there's anything to see, but we can certainly take a walk over.
There's a lot of bittersweet out there.
Yeah, exactly.
Isn't that awful?
There's a lot of work to do, Bill, you brought your gloves.
No, I've already done that at home. It's really terrible stuff. It'll strangle you.
So that's what we have here on the campus. I think it's been a tremendous reuse of the hospital facility. As a county, I think we should be pretty proud about what we've turned this campus into, so.
So it's gone from a net liability to a net asset?
It really has, I think, yeah. The ownership arrangement, as you know, is we've leased out the properties, the property, the land, the real estate itself is still, continues to be owned by the county. We haven't given up ownership of any of the land, so it's a tremendous asset, I think, for the county and for the town of Born. I hope they see it as the same thing.
Well, I think that we had talked to the town of Born back, you know, back when we were looking at how to use the property and had their support, let's say, for the outcome that we have now, which I think is very important, because I think more than anything else, I believe, is, you know, as a county, regional government, that we want to make sure that we are in communication and collaboration with, you know, with all of the towns that we're working with.
Can you talk a bit about the assisted living? How many people can live there? Who can be eligible? And who operates it? Who actually leases it and operates it?
It's operated by the Pocasset Assisted Living. It's a corporation, separate corporation. The funding was provided by Sun Life in terms of the financing. It was done with a tax credit bonds. And so basically, the investors through Sun Life get tax credits over about a 10-year period, and that makes the, that enables the facility to be affordable because there's reduced costs in terms of the construction. So the, I'm not exactly sure about the affordability pieces of it. There are income guidelines. I believe you have to be 130% of the poverty level within the income guidelines. There are, I believe, 40 units on the assisted living side, and, what did I say, 40 units on the, I can't remember the exact number, 40 units on the...
24 independent.
24 on the independent, it's a smaller side, so.
And they stay occupied?
And they've been occupied, yeah.
They're very busy. They have a monthly newsletter that comes out to the towns, and every year and a half or so, we talk to the director out there as well on a non-special basis. We're certainly out there when they do, but they're running a very good operation there, and the residents there seem very, very content and happy.
Have they come to shop? All the time.
I bet you they do.
Yes.
So we have a little village?
Your location is very important.
Is an element of Pocasset Assisted Living still the...
They are a member, they are a partner in the assisted living, that's right.
Okay, so I think it's important for people to know that there's still a Cape Cod connection with regard to the management of the facility, because in other cases, there may be organizations that are headquartered out of state and, you know, and out of the community, but in this instance, we continue to have a, you know, contact through a local organization for management.
Right, and I believe if I remember the agreement correctly, the long-term perspective is for once the owner gets their tax credit value out of it, typically they aren't interested in holding it any longer. And I believe the long-term interest was for Hack to become the permanent owner of the facility itself. The county would retain ownership of the real estate, but Hack would be the owner and manager of the building.
And that, of course, protects it, protects the interests of people who live on the Cape for access to this facility because of that.
Right, and the overall agreement is it's a 99-year lease with the county for the facility, so that's good. I should mention this facility, this is the Thorn, Gosnell Thorn Clinic. It was originally built by the Thorn Foundation, and we have a long-term lease with them as well. Thorn owns the building. I believe they might have entered into a long-term agreement with Gosnell now, and the county owns the land underneath.
So is the medical examiner's facility, didn't they used to be here?
The medical examiner's facility used to be in the hospital building itself, in the basement. That's where that facility was, yeah, long ago.
It's moved.
They did, didn't they build a new site in Thelma, which they haven't really occupied, if I understood correctly?
That's right. Yes, a brand-new building. It's been sitting there for months.
For a while, they had, we had closed the hospital for inpatient services back in 95. If I have my dates right. We continued, or Cranberry Specialty Clinics in Plymouth, that they used to run, the Cranberry Hospital there, continued to run an outpatient clinic for a couple of years here. The medical examiner continued to operate here for a couple of years, kind of while we were putting together the plan to build the assisted living. Then we got to a point where we just had to close it, it got torn down. The medical examiner, I believe at that time, relocated to Boston. There was no other facility here, so they were going to Boston. But of course, you remember, one of the last ones they did here was JFK Junior.
I remember that. I remember, they had to file the decedent in Thelma Town Hall.
So I think what I'll do is maybe I'll introduce Diane.
Yes.
And she wants to tell us a little bit about the Thrift Shop, the Lincoln Business House, and take a walk over.
We always have bargains.
Yes, I know.
All the time. Hard to leave empty-handed.
Talking about the history of this complex, I thought I would give you each a copy of an article here in one of our members' newsletters' postscript, which gives a synopsis of how the county hospital complex came to be, who all the players were in it, and gives you some history of this facility back to 1918. And it's kind of interesting, I see that the library is named for Dr. Blanchard, who was one of the original directors of the Thorn Clinic and also one of the last residents to occupy what is now Valley Farm Thrift. Dr. Blanchard and his family still live in the area in Monument Beach and have been by to visit us after we opened. I am Diane Spears. I act as the shop manager for Valley Farm Thrift and chair our management committee. Valley Farm is a collaborative effort of three historic local nonprofit organizations of Born, and they are the Born Historical Society, Born Society for Historic Preservation, and the Gatamet Schoolhouse Preservation Group. And our joint venture is actually a historic event for all three of our organizations to come together and work together. Valley Farm is a way for us to provide a more permanent revenue stream to fund our various missions. We all share a common mission, which is to preserve local heritage of Born. You may be familiar with some of our other properties. The Born Historical Society oversees the Apptex Trading Post and also uses the Born Historic Center. Born Society for Historic Preservation operates the Briggs McDermott Complex, including the Alonso Smith Booth Smith Blacksmith Shop and the Carriage Shed. And of course, the Gatamet Schoolhouse Group preserves the late 1800s one-room schoolhouse over on further down County Road. So we have banded together to create, operate, and run the thrift. We all share equally in the sweat equity and the volunteers that we use to run the thrift and also share equally in the proceeds. No longer a forlorn little cottage by the side of County Road, Valley Farm Thrift has found its roots and blossomed into the late Greek revival farmhouse of former days. The house was built, as far as we know, in the summer of 1919. And transformed by a legion of volunteers, friends, and local tradesmen, Valley Farm Thrift sparkles with their care as a cherished gem fulfilling a new purpose while providing a window to the past as part of the old Barnstable County Hospital Complex at 892 County Road. We also have a pictorial history, which you'll see in the house, that'll show you what the building and farmland looked like in the late 1930s. Our house served originally as the home to the farm manager for Barnstable County Hospital and his family. The surrounding fields provided fresh produce for the hospital staff and patients. You'll see a picture of that. And then following 1945, when he retired and moved across the street, the house later served as home to resident physicians and their families for the hospital and Thorn Clinic. And many of those families and their relatives still remain in our area and have been by to visit. The original farm manager's family lives across the street and up the street, and his great-grandson is involved in the design of our community garden. He's a landscape architect student in Washington. We've all enjoyed hearing their stories about what the house looked like in the days they lived in it. Since our opening day, August 8th of 2009, the thrift offers the ordinary to the extraordinary, the everyday to the treasure you'd ever know you couldn't live without, the delightfully unexpected. Where else could you find pink flamingo salt-and-pepper shakers, a black poodle dust set, a magnificent...
We have that now?
We do. A magnificent tea trolley, and designer labels all in the same Born shop, such as the Valley Farm Collection, an amazing eclectic array of ever-changing merchandise and part of the hub of commerce in Pocasset that's hard to leave empty-handed. Open Thursday through Saturday from 10 to 4 year-round, the thrift is a chic resale bargain boutique featuring affordable women's and men's clothing, accessories, housewares, household linens, tableware, books, and small furniture. We are very blessed with a very supportive neighborhood and community of donors, and we constantly hear from our surrounding neighbors how happy they are to see the house in use again and what good stewards we are of this property. I should mention that I also, I live in the neighborhood. I live three doors up the road from Valley Farm, so I can attest to the fact that, yes, it's looking much better than in former days.
Yeah, it was a long time coming, huh?
Yes, yes. Over the past 14 months, Valley Farm Thrift has seen over 1,400-plus shoppers crossing our door. And to be in such fine shape within our first year is testament to all of our volunteers' hard effort and teamwork, not to mention the generosity of many of our local tradesmen who donated in kind services. It is remarkable what you can accomplish when you join hands together and do, as Teddy Roosevelt said, "Do what you can with what you have where you are." Except for a brief use by workers during the construction of the Cape Cod Senior Residences, this building had been unoccupied for, as far as we know, about the last 20 years or longer, and had fallen upon sad times. During the time we have taken possession of the building, many upgrades have been made, both to the exterior and interior of the building. With the help of local tradesmen and volunteers, we have enhanced the exterior by installing a new parking area, painting the building trim, installing a handicap ramp, rebuilding the fallen chimney, removing the fallen antenna, installing outside electrical outlet and water faucet, replacing the rotted bulkhead, cleaning the gutters, and a number of other items as well. As one of our neighbors, Chris Markinson, maintains the lawn for us at no charge as his contribution to the thrift. In the interior, we have replaced the heating system with natural gas and a new furnace, replaced the water heater, installed additional overhead lighting, replaced the kitchen ceiling, replastered the kitchen and front room partial ceiling, refinished three rooms with hardwood flooring, painted the basement walls and floor, painted every room on the first floor and ceilings, as well as the stairwell to the second floor, and repaired windows on the first floor. We conservatively estimate the value of improvements made to the building as part of our renovation efforts to be $18,222.
That's great.
Our plans for the fall are to construct a new walkway from the end of the handicap ramp to the handicap parking space to make it easier for our customers to traverse the lawn, especially in winter weather. Success breeds success, and we look forward to taking up our next challenge as we continue to grow the thrift. Our next venture is completing our vision of Valley Farm and reclaiming the meadow now overtaken with bittersweet that once was farmland, and to return it to its historic use by creating a community garden open to the residents of Born. As William Clark once said, "Faith is the daring of the soul to go farther than it can see." On behalf of Valley Farm, thank you for sharing our vision and your support during our journey into the unknown. We look forward to this opportunity to showcase all that we have accomplished in bringing Valley Farm back to life and all that is yet to be. So we hope you will join us for a tour of the building following this meeting. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. I'm just so impressed with your partnership and collaboration with the other groups. How did that come about?
It's very, it's very funny. We have, we have all, from time to time, worked with one another on, usually on an event or some cross-promotion of our varying services. And many of our members are members of each other's organizations. And we've had our differences over the past, and it really, it really was kind of remarkable how it all came about. Of course, you know, during these challenging economic times, we have all faced, looking at new ways to generate revenue and maintain the buildings that we all have. So it always is a challenge to come up with fundraising events or solicit grants or what have you. So we thought, and it would be well to partner together. And one of our, one of our members, Nancy Eldridge, came up with the idea of running a thrift shop because they had, as part of Gatamet Schoolhouse, done a number of yard sales, who thought was, well, if you could find a permanent way to have a permanent indoor yard sale, you'd have a way of generating some revenue. Nancy is friends with Jane Nam, that Mark knows, and they happened to notice that the thrift building, what's now the thrift building, was unoccupied and not being used, and of course, on a nice visible roadway. To us, it looked like an opportunity, and Nancy approached the various groups with that idea, and we later developed a business plan for it. And I have to say, we were all very skeptical at the outset, but when we looked into it further, we thought it was something that we could, that we could do, and that historically, looking at other thrifs, it looked like it was a moneymaker and something that during, especially this economy, most were experiencing growth with. So it's, it has worked out very well, and on our, we have a management committee that oversees the running of the thrift, and we have representation from all three groups. equally on that, on that board. And I don't know, I can't say. It's, it's been remarkably non-contentious. And we have a, when, on the thrift, we have a very harmonious relationship as far as that goes. I think it's just, it's just something that has captivated our imagination and captured our hearts. And, and when we look at it, it's, you know, we look, I think what, what we look at is some of the pictures that Tavis McLeod loaned us of what it was like during the '30s, when his grand, great-grandparents had it. And we look at that picture, and it was such a marvelous opportunity that fit within our mission to not only generate revenue, but to have an opportunity to bring something back to the town of Bourne, to preserve a picture of what it was like at that time. And we do have very many older residents who still live along County Road who remember that. Priscilla Swift, who lives up the street from us, she's 90 years old. She's told us some marvelous stories about playing with the McLeod children, going through the fields, ice skating on what is now Picture Lake, and a time in the past that, that is marvelous to remember. And that's one of the things that has happened with Valley Farm. We have a number of our volunteers who used to work at the county hospital, shoppers who've come in who used to work at the county hospital and shared some wonderful stories. One of our neighbors across the street, Tom Lynch, used to work for Denmark's and was the account manager for the county hospital, so was there all the time. So it's, it's just been very interesting what has developed since. And what we had hoped was, as part of this partnership, that we would learn to work together better, that we would create a sense of community at the thrift. And, and some of that has happened. Our volunteers have made new friends and look forward to coming there and sharing that time with each other.
You know, it reminds me that 10 years ago, when I was in the assembly, we came to Bourne to review a DCPC. And the report that we got at that time is exactly what you're talking about here, where there was a community coming together for something of mutual interest to preserve a part, you know, a part of Bourne deal at that time. And it seems that that's, you know, that, it's delightful for me to come back on a county exercise again and see that that same spirit of collaboration, you know, still exists.
Well, I think nowadays, you see so much of a look at especially older buildings that have lost their original purpose and use, and people look at them as excess, surplus, let's tear them down, let's demolish them. And so, for us, since so much of Bourne's heritage has vanished in its older buildings, it was a chance to preserve in a very hands-on way a part of Bourne's past. Most of County Road at one time was all small farms. And I think this is a way for us to preserve that way of life and to apply it to more contemporary use. So I hope you'll be as impressed with what you see today as we are with what we've accomplished.
Just as Anika Oli, I used to be a cemetery commissioner, and one of the things we used to say to people is if you don't have any respect for your past, you have no interest in your future. So I think that you're certainly demonstrating that.
I also just think it reflects the geography and the challenges of Bourne, and I'm sure you can attest to this, Tom. You know, Bourne is a very unique community to the rest of our towns here in Barnstable County. Number one, it doesn't border other, you know, on the north end, it doesn't border other towns at the end of the county. It's split by a canal. It has two bridges kind of splitting, you know, so it has been, the challenge to maintain that community with all of these divisions that have happened over the years, each then lending its own characteristic, almost in little townships, is, is, and being able to be successful in doing that is, is a reflection of that character of being able to still pull together with varying, with these varying geographic and then character issues. So I commend Bourne. I think it's a very unique and beautiful area that people don't appreciate when they're just driving over that bridge because, you know, with all of the different, there are little hidden jewels here that I'm sure you don't want everyone to know about, so that they can maintain those beautiful characteristics.
Sandwich and Bourne used to be the same community. So they, you know, I believe that Bourne still borders the same, on both sides of the canal, because there's a little piece of Sandwich on the other side.
What I'm saying is on the north end. So, I mean, it just has had all of these different challenges to, to, to deal with.
And it was a significant challenge, that building. I have to give them a lot of credit. We tried to reuse it for, say, the health department or a cooperative extension, but really, the challenge for that was, you know, it's, it's convenient on the Cape to be in kind of the Barnstable area. You're, you're centrally located. Out here, the satellite office concept didn't really work, wasn't very efficient. Then, remember, the sheriff looked at that building. The sheriff had some ideas about using it as a community halfway house, so to speak. And they really didn't think they could make it work because the building was in such tough shape. So they passed on it, so.
Well, congratulations. I will have to say that the neighbors are very happy not to have the SWAT team come and visit and more, and practicing on the building.
I would imagine.
Yes.
I think too, many people don't really understand the difference between a consignment shop and a thrift shop.
That's true.
Particularly the thrift shop that is so community-based and the major benefits that it really has. I went to a thrift shop fashion show one time, and it was amazing. The person, the person who was the chair of the fashion show had this beautiful suit on that you paid $12 for at the thrift shop. And, and people could buy anything that was there, assuming it fit them. But it, it just really enhanced, again, the, the understanding in the community of what a thrift shop actually does, the partnership among organizations, and then how it benefits people who, who want to use the thrift shop for various reasons. Either they want to donate or they want to buy. And it's just, I think it's just amazing. And, and that now you have the garden to enhance what you do, so you have more reasons for people to come. I can't wait to see it.
We are part of the green movement, reduce, reuse, recycle. We also partnered recently with our friends at the Friends at the Library, who helped us when we were starting out with their Dancing with the Stars event, and some of the outfits that were there were ours.
That was a very fun.
That's a great idea. Yeah.
They did well with that as a fundraiser.
That sounds like it.
And a lot of the organization in Bourne have been very good to us, the St. John's Ladies Guild, who always invites us to the end of their marvelous rummage sale when we need to restock, and as well. So when we have a chance to get back to the community, we do. Very little of what we have actually gets thrown out. We do pass things along to the Katomet Shelter, Salvation Army, and many other charitable groups to share with them the good fortune we've been blessed with.
That's terrific. Excellent. I agree with you. I can't wait to see it.
All right. So before we go, we just want to take care of our business.
Okay, yep.
And that is to vote our summary of actions. Anybody have any questions about any of the things?
I think it's pretty straightforward, but we, we have an opportunity to go over some, some items that, as far as our own comment.
Yes. You mean about these?
Yeah, well, about our reports.
About this or about others?
Reports.
Now, or do we plan to come back here, or do we plan to move on down to the county?
I would say you would recess from here and re-adjourn at your executive session at the county.
At the county. And then we can take that up in the open meeting part. We're recessing our open meeting, so we will open, have an open meeting when we come back from recess and then go into executive session later, which you have to do anyway.
Can I stop you?
Yes.
Because the way this is posted, I don't think you can have an open meeting at your 1 o'clock session at the county, because it does specify executive session.
True. But you have to, you can't go into executive session unless you're in open session.
We're in open session now.
So it's still an open session when we get there.
Except the, the business that builds time law is posted here.
Where?
Under our 10 o'clock meeting piece. You see what I'm getting at? So not, so it's not to violate the open meeting law. I'd rather just do, if he has a report to do, an open meeting, just do it here. Because I actually have one too.
Come back here then, after the tour?
No, just do it now.
Oh, just do it now?
Keep it short.
Okay. I'll take as much time as I need.
Man, I'm sure I would ask you to get.
Well, first, let, are we prepared to vote the summary of actions?
Okay, I'll move on.
Any second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Not opposed? We in favor, motion canceled.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom, very much.
We'll see. Okay, we'll see you tomorrow.
All right.
Yep, very good.
Okay, I wanted to comment that when we went to the town councilors and selectmen association meeting, that they were reporting that there were fences and gates and clearcutting by N-Star on the transmission lines.
Right.
And I wanted to make sure that, you know, you were aware.
I am aware of that, and we will bring that up. That, N-Star is giving a presentation on the 22nd, and I'm sure that will be addressed.
Where was that? In what place was that?
Out of the Barnstable County Selectments Meeting.
No, where were they doing the cutting?
Oh, they were doing it on the, on the, on their right side way, on the transmission. Now, the issue for Ed Lewis was that this was area that was, you know, that was freely accessed by, you know, by abutters, and that the fences and the, and the gates were restricting that access. In addition, the selectman from Eastham was saying that there was some clearcutting and, let's see, and rabbit, I guess savaging of the, you know, of the, of the trees and so forth along that right away. And she was quite concerned about that, that this was, that did not seem to be in the spirit of the vegetation management agreement that N-Star was supposed to have made.
Yes, we know that. We're very well aware of it.
Was that brought up at the last meeting?
It was brought up to me. We have not, it was not known at the meeting. It's been known since the meeting. It'll be brought up at the next meeting.
And they're giving a presentation.
And they're giving a presentation, so all of that will be addressed.
Okay. On October, and October 22nd, where is that meeting going to be?
That is going to be in rooms 1112, I believe.
What time?
At 9 o'clock.
9 a.m.
Yeah.
And that's Friday, October 22nd.
And the, October 7th, they did a proclamation at the town council in Barnstable to announce Peace Week, which will start next week, you know, with, with many events in the town of Barnstable. On October 6th, I went to the Barnstable Village Business Association meeting, and they are looking for, a specific request through Ann Kennedy, the town councilor who has that area, was to investigate the possibility of designating parking places for employees on the, you know, that work in the, in the village itself. And she'd asked me to bring that up. She said it was part of their visioning, you know, their vision association. They're having an annual meeting on October 24th, I believe, so I'm bringing it to your, I'm bringing that to your attention so that you're aware of that.
I wanted to go to that, and I wasn't able to.
Okay. And I think you're all aware that Jim Clark is-
Yes, he's very, very terrible, so we have to send something.
And, oh, and one thing I wanted to bring up, because I think we should start thinking about it, is that we're entering budget season, and I think we have to start thinking about pre-budget revenue, you know, in a pre-budget sense, about our revenue sources so that we'll be prepared, let's say, to, you know, to go forward.
What I'll do is I'll send you the revenue page, so you guys can familiarize yourself with the existing piece, and we can look at that again.
Okay. And then, I had a question on the wastewater, you know, issue with regard to the appointment of council.
Yes, I saw that letter from Mr. Troy.
Okay. And I, and I think that we need to, we need to discuss that.
No.
Okay. As far as, you know, because there is the issue, has it passed through the litigation management committee, which I don't believe it has?
It has not, no. I wouldn't expect that it would, we would intend it to go through the litigation management committee. It would come directly to you.
Okay. Well, I would like to have the advice of the council on that.
Yeah, I, I think Bob's concern is he should be involved. And I've tried to keep him involved in kind of what is going on with the potential wastewater suit. But ultimately, it's your call on naming special counsel.
That's the endpoint. It's how we get to the endpoint. I think that he has some concerns that we need to take up, and maybe we need to put that on our agenda for next week.
I think that's a good point.
I won't be here next week. I'm at Macris.
Okay. All right. Which brings up another point that I have a great concern with. I know that you had car trouble at the last meeting. I think we would have been, you know, we would have been, it would have been useful had you been there, but in addition, Maggie left. So I think there's some question as far as availability on Wednesday, if, you know, as far as setting up alternate venues for staff, especially, you know, our manager and assistant manager.
Well, but there's almost no question. How many times have I not been here? And next week, I'm scheduled to be at Macris, so.
Well, I, I hope that Maggie will be there to represent, you know, our interests.
I believe that was her intent. But last week, I was out, and that was accidental. So I apologize for that.
No, I get that part of it. And, but to me, we didn't have anybody taking minutes for, you know, at, at, at any of the sessions that we had. We didn't have staff support in several discussions that, you know, that we went through. So, you know, I'm quite concerned about that. And I bring it up for that reason. And then, the other issue is, well, we had talked about putting out an RFP for this operational, not operational, operational assessment. And I, and I wonder if we had a date certain as to when we expected to start.
RFQ. Maggie will know that. It's really an RFQ, because it's under $24,999.
Yeah, it's really too close.
So she's just getting quotes. So RFQ, so it's not an RFP.
I think what, when that was, what I was going to suggest was for next week, try to get ahold of Mark Morris.
Well, whoever, or maybe-
Yeah. Well, I thought you wanted to talk to Mark Morris about kind of what was going to happen going forward.
Well, Maggie and I both did talk to him. We talked to him about scope of services and things that we thought, you know, what should be included in the scope of service. So I'll check with Maggie when we come back and see what she has from her RFQs, from her quotes, because she was calling three or four different people to see what the quotes are. Because we have to, you know.
And that's what I was going to suggest you do next Wednesday.
Right. So we can do that on Wednesday, the response to the RFQs.
And so start time for next meeting would be, you want to do that at 2 o'clock? It is an assembly day.
Well, you, you've mentioned several, a couple of items that we want to discuss.
Well, maybe one. We might-
Yeah, let's do it at 4 o'clock next week.
Okay.
Which would be October 20.
Okay. So, so just so all understand, we're going to, as agenda items, we're going to discuss the, was it, the designation of a special counsel.
I don't know that you're ready to do that.
No, I think we can just-
We want to talk, we don't want to designate. We want to discuss the process for the designation of special counsel.
Because I might mention that-
And we might have to have Bob, I think, there.
If he's available.
He has asked to, to, he has asked to meet with us on the process.
Great. I bring this up because the assistant town manager in Barnstable had mentioned to me that he got an email from Andrew Gottlieb telling him that we had appointed a special counsel. So I'm quite concerned about this.
I don't think that's the case.
Well, I'm telling you what, this is journalism. I'm telling you what I was told. And because I was told that, I'm looking, I'm doing the due diligence to pursue that.
Well, I would say, Bill, since you are the ones who appoint special counsel, you know, in fact, that not to be the case.
Right.
Yeah, we have not appointed.
At the meeting that we had last week-
We really asked, we discussed.
We discussed, we discussed.
We didn't take any options of who-
Well, again-
Has an expertise in the area.
It's my problem because when I left there-
If other people have that perception, then we need to clarify the perception.
Because I left there with the, with the, with the perception that we had indeed said that he could go ahead with this.
Not, it's not my-
No, we didn't say that.
I can tell you for a fact that no vote as such was reported.
That's exactly right. We did not do any votes.
That's true. Okay. So I wondered how he was able to do that.
Well, maybe, maybe the assistant town manager didn't get this, this story exactly right.
What we suggested was he'd get more information.
Right.
Okay.
And that's how Andrew has communicated to me, because I haven't talked to him about that.
Right. They, they-
So I, yeah.
Possibilities for us to consider.
We would have to have a contract in front of us. We would have to have-
I'm only speaking to my problem and my understanding of perception. So I wanted to bring that up, because I, if it's, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Okay. And so we're going to, we're going to discuss that. And then the other thing that we're going to discuss is the, let's see, what was the second thing?
Scope of services for the accounting review process.
Right. That's it.
And that's it?
Yeah. Now, that's assuming Bob's available.
That's assuming he's available, right. But maybe if he were available earlier in the day.
Could he be available by phone, for example?
We can, we can do that now.
We could do that anyway.
Well, if he's available, he's available. I mean, the question is, is he in court? Is he offline?
All right, that's true. Yeah, because he's not that far away.
Yeah, because he's not that far away.
Again, I apologize if I'm misunderstanding what you're going, I'm going away with, and that's why I'm asking you any questions. Better to ask, you know, and find out rather than, rather than presuming to be a fool, I do enough of that.
Yeah, I mentioned just two things, I won't ask you to sign this today, but this is the $10 million authorization for borrowing for the community septic management loan program. This is the third such authorization that we've done. I'm going to put this into needs action next, next week, so you're not surprised by it. And since I'm not there, I'd ask Kendall to, at four o'clock, go over with you guys and submit this to the assembly delegates.
Good.
So we'll get that underway.
Let's see, 2 million or 10 million?
10 million.
10 million.
And they're actually going through probably about 5 million a year at this point in time, maybe a little bit more than that, in terms of septic loans, so it's not like any busters. And I did want to mention that the September numbers from the registry deeds were very strong, over 700,000, I think people were trying to beat one of the federal programs that were in tax program, thank you. So it's very strong, that's over 26% higher than the same period of September last year, so.
So we're only in March, August, so we're three months.
Yeah, so we're almost 9% ahead of last year at this point in time, and actually, we actually for this year lowered our, lowered our assumption in terms of revenue from registry deeds from 7.5 to 7 million, so.
Well, considering the overall information we hear about the housing, about housing sales, they are really down.
Yeah, exactly.
And now that that, that tax credit has been.
And the whole foreclosure.
Right, that might have been the last one.
A big question mark.
People are staying in their homes now, so they're not for sale, and it's, you know, it's going to create a serious problem.
But so far, the good, it's good news, so we'll have to see how the rest of it works out. So that's all, yeah.
Anything else?
No.
I just thought maybe I'd, since I'm into the wastewater issues, I went to the wastewater meeting and found it last night, just to see where they are, three and a half hours, and they are prepared to submit their recommendations on October 26th for phase one, which will require certain town meeting votes, both in November and in April. There's $100 million of retiring debt that the town has come 2011, no, 2012, so that there will be $100 million to spend on phase one, which is kind of interesting. And so what the thinking of the committee is, it isn't like deciding the whole plan and saying, here's what we want to do, and maybe it costs $300 million, they're designing it in phases so that what can we do for $100 million, you know, this is what we can do in phase one for $100 million, which is kind of a different way of approaching it. Instead of costing out, well, they have looked at pretty much costing out the entire project, but instead of saying this is what we have to fund to take it more on a, on a phased basis and it's more understandable to people. And it also gives time for the committee, a new committee, to explore the benefit of alternatives, because a lot of the alternatives are out there, but there isn't any real long-term assessment of their benefit. Will they actually, over 10 years, continue to reduce the nitrogen like the permeable, the permeable barriers? And so, so they can, they can accomplish two things, they can actually deal with the financial issues because they have looked at up until 2038, what the retiring debt is for the town and how that can be utilized to do this, in combination with betterment, if that is the choice of the town, and I'm not sure it will be, because there are a lot of people who think that the town should pay for everything and that there should not be any betterment at all, because, but then it comes to the, to the issue of septic systems. If somebody has to pay for their own septic system, then why should there not be a betterment for someone to have to hook up to a sewer and pay for that? And then it was, well, maybe the town should pay for everybody's septic systems too, because it's part of the whole wastewater plan. So it's a very interesting discussion, and October 26th is the, is the drop dead date when all of their recommendations come. Not bad.
Not bad at all, the town council, by the way, at Barnstable's, at their public comments, somebody came, got up and took great exception to them doing anything with regard to the wastewater management issues until the county was in a position to.
Who said this, where?
Julius.
At what?
At the Barnstable Town Council.
Oh, at the Barnstable Town Council, well, that was our great fear, that if we pursued the whole idea of the National Academy of Sciences, that towns then would use that as sort of a reason for delaying any of their planning, and if that's the thinking of some of the elected people, then that's exactly what we thought would happen.
Well, it's not the elected people, it was a member of the community that got up and wanted the town councils to delay.
Well, that came up last night with this wastewater management, the review committee, and they, they were like, hey, you know, if you want to review the science, that's fine, take a look at it, but for us, we want to keep on moving forward.
And did you tell them that, you know, we've had this symposium underway?
Oh, yeah, they know about that.
So you're recessing.
We're recessing now from the.
You've been very patient.
The Valley Farm Thrift Shop.
And then they're going to re-adjourn at one o'clock at the county offices.
At the county office, yes.
Okay. So I guess we have a number of elderly, elderly residents that are really, really wise and can, and we have kind of several.
Good morning.
Good morning, how are you? Hello. How are you? Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi, yes, we have.
How are you?
Good to see you.
Fran Spears.
Nice to meet you, Fran, Sheila Lyons, very good to meet you.
Good morning.
I'm Steve the video guy.
Yes.
Our dog was back on 28A in Katamit.
Yes. This is great. So.
Yeah, chock full of wonderful stuff. Good to meet you, Bill, thank you for coming.
This room here was originally three different rooms. You can see by the floorboards there that.
Oh, yes.
That was originally, the porch was originally recessed into the house, and then you can see where the door gen was over here, and this was at one time a bedroom, so they're told, and way back when, there used to be a wood stove here that Priscilla Swift tells us they used to warm their tootsies on when they were little. These are some of the historic pictures that you can see, and this one in particular kind of shows you why we have this vision of the farm.
Oh, absolutely.
Absolutely, as well as, as the house here.
Absolutely.
Alan McLeod had, didn't believe in electric equipment and, and other mechanical equipment, so he had horses, he had two big horses called Danny Boy and Major, they used to pull his farm equipment about, used to make the weekly trash run, I guess all the kids liked to ride on the wagon to bed, and some of them remember in the wintertime, you can see this flag that Danny Boy, he used to have high on, and he would take them down to the Katamit schoolhouse to go to school.
How wonderful.
So it's that vision of the past that we have stuck in our head and want to bring back.
Yes, and then these are.
Maybe even with a horse and plow. Well, we've talked about having some hay rides or something like that as a fundraiser, and.
I'm Mark Slinski.
Mark Slinski.
Nice to meet you.
These are some of the senior doctors that from time to time in the house, some.
This is the last time I was in here.
His daughter lives down the street from us, Karen and John White, and she, her parents lived here briefly when they were first married and then moved next door to what is now Elder Services, and she grew up there. So we have a lot of people who are still in the area and conundrums here.
Yeah, that's great.
And as you can see, what was very typical of the 1920s, a lot of the built-in features that are retained, a lot of our former residents have said, oh, looks exactly the same, never changed a thing.
See, we had built one, we had one of those houses with Austin, and my father had a little cut of his back where he used to put a jug in the back so my mother wouldn't see it.
So all of this, all of this has been repainted, the trim, the walls, there is a faux painting brush stroke effect that was done by Jack McDonald, the track lighting has been added, and the ceiling over in that portion all had to be replastered.
It looks really great.
Jonathan Bangston, one of our local tradesmen, did our plaster work.
There's a hat for you over there.
Oh, yeah, thanks a lot. Yeah, I get it. By the way, where did the landscape architect go, which school does he go to in Boston?
I'm not sure.
Does he go to BAC, the Boston Architectural College?
I'm not sure which one that Tavis goes to, very nice young man though, very enthusiastic. So we are now.
You have a better selection than Macy's.
The old kitchen stands the appliances which we hauled away to the dump, and this is our houseware section.
Yes, this is crazy.
You will notice the hardwood floors that we have courtesy of Jack McDonald of Osprey Design, and we had to peel off old linoleum and sand down old tar adhesive to get down to the original floors, which have all been refinished and polyurethane.
What we've done to these beautiful old houses.
The old pantry, old original pantry is now our book nook, yeah.
So what are the flamingo salt and pepper shakers?
I have to say, I did sell those.
Oh, see?
We had a very good offer.
I only have to live with my disappointment.
They fly out of here fast.
I bet they do.
Over here is what one of our volunteers calls the bling room, it's our ladies fancy dress, so if you're going to an occasion. At one time, we're told this was used kind of as a den, had a piano in it.
Oh, yeah?
We do have a half bath on the first floor, and then of course we have our dressing room here, so if you're going to an occasion, it's a place to come.
Well, I guess so.
Outfitting many people here.
Many weddings, fairness.
My bet.
So you got rid of the walls, huh?
Yeah.
Shoes, my big shoes.
Very pretty.
You do, don't you?
You're lost.
They have a vintage home.
And we're, we're not going to go upstairs, but I will show you the, the eclectic stairway that we have with a spatter of paint, stairway and faux.
This week, not dropping the shield.
No, I'm looking around.
What was there to buy?
They have some wonderful.
Stairwell was in really tough shape on the walls, we had to replaster the whole thing.
Oh, is it done?
Well.
And then we have our.
That's very nice.
I think was related to buildup gutters, which we ended up cleaning out when we painted the trim.
Did you say this was a porch or what?
Originally, originally we were told it was an open porch. And at some point in time was enclosed.
Hey, some ties over there, Bill.
A wrapped tie.
Well, yeah, Brooks Brothers, we sold a lot of those back in the day.
You know, I remember talking to John O'Connor, who's the maintenance man here, and actually John worked for the Assistant of the Department, and I started in 94, and.
Well, that's a nice handbag.
The floor was painted, I can tell you the drains actually work down here, which was surprising. And you might recall, Mark, there used to be an oil tank over there that was sort of of dubious nature. So that was removed and we installed an energy efficient.
Yeah.